I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Waynesville City Council for the month of November. We have been having an executive council meeting and we did do roll call in there. And we are all here, Cecil has arrived. Michelle?
Thank you.
And I have a special guest tonight. Guys, I'd like to introduce everybody to the new pastor of the United Methodist Church. This is Reverend Lindsey Walters. Is it Walters? Is it plural?
Yes.
Yes. And if you would step up Lindsey and give us a prayer and would you stay, remain standing and I will lead you on the pledge allegiance.
Would you bow your heads with me please? Dear wise and loving Father, first, let me say thank you. On behalf of all who are gathered here today, thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of help we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for your never-ending love and grace. In the scriptures you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. So therefore, God, I pray for our mayor, I pray for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I am asking if you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. I pray for the agenda set before them this evening. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work and in and around our beloved city. It is in your son's most precious name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Lindsey, thank you very much. We welcome you to our community and we wish you the best at the Methodist Church. I know my friends who go there are already speaking of you and speaking of you with glowing terms. And what a great prayer.
Thank you.
Kind of made me feel good guys, what do y'all think? So appreciate that.
Thanks.
Thank you Lindsey and welcome. The first thing on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. And this for you who are new, this is just regular business, I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Clarence, second by Mike Curtis, and all those in favor. That's unanimous. And now we have our special guest of the evening. And I'm going to come around the front again. We've got two special guests tonight. I believe, correct me Marv, I believe two years ago, we honored Gary Canance for his 50th year in broadcasting here in our community. And then would you believe, Marv, this year in September, has now passed 40 years in our community. And one of the things that I was going to say about Marv, I actually wrote some notes Marv, watch out.
It might be serious.
It might be. First of all, I've been really fortunate to be your friend for all these years and you and Terry. And you know, Marv is one of those people in our community, if you're known by one name, you've really arrived.
Yep.
Right Steve? Yeah, everybody knows who Steve is, right? Do you remember Sadie? Everybody knew who Sadie was. I mean, those were just people that were part of our community, they were iconic. And Marv, you're one of those people. Your voice is so recognizable and I think Gary Canance, Warren Goldforth, and Marv Luton, you would know their voices anywhere. You have been the go-to man for sports and we've appreciated that over the years. Haven't you seen the ups and the downs?
Oh boy, haven't we?
Of all the sports. And he really has, I think one of the things I appreciate Marv, is his neat little sarcasm. Would everybody agree with me? He has a little sarcastic voice, in fact, I heard it this morning. I think it was political.
It probably was.
I think it was political, but you were being a little sarcastic. But time has flown, gosh, 40 years, I believe, you know, I was here by the time you arrived. I came in 71, I believe you came in 78. But our community is very fortunate to have people like you, people like Gary, that have stayed in our community and really made it your home. And I want you to know that your community, in fact, several of us are going to thank you tonight for the knowledge that you've shown, your sense of community, your sense of fun, right, and his sense of sports. And Marv, if you would come up and Terry, would you come up with him please?
She did not want to do this.
She didn't want to, but she's a supportive wife, right?
Yeah. Most of the time.
Eventually, we're going to have three people up here, but on behalf of the city of Waynesville, I want to offer a proclamation to you honoring your 40 years. I won't read all this because I think I just said most of it.
Okay.
But appreciate you so much and let's get us a little picture here. And Marv, we love you.
Thank you.
We love you. Maybe you could put his stuff over there because there's going to be more.
Oh.
Steve, would you come up? Steve is here and he's here to represent the state of Missouri. And we also have the city of St. Robert. And Anita will be here in just a minute.
Thank you Mayor, thanks for allowing me to do this tonight as well. And I know it is nighttime, but good morning everybody! Today when I went to the Waynesville St. Robert Senior Center for the Thanksgiving dinner, I had several ladies greet me with that greeting. I literally have people all over the state greet me with "Good morning Steve" when they see me. Now the relevance to that is tonight, that my buddy, Marv and I, were on the radio for many, many years, every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday.
And now I have your daughter.
And so, Marv gets part of the credit, or the blame, for that, for me saying that, because that is where it started. And I'll tell you this about Marv and I, one thing, we've both on the same bowling team for a while.
Yeah, you took a lot of money from me.
But the other thing was, Marv is a very, very, very talented guy at the radio station. But Marv and I, we didn't talk about furniture every day.
No.
And we literally had people, I had people say, we did 7:45 in the morning, they didn't go into work until we got done. Now my three, our three little minute thing, sometimes was 10 little minutes. And we literally had people call the radio station and some folks that were homebound and said we were the reason that they got up in the morning. Mainly Marv more than me. So when I am presenting this to him tonight, believe me, I am honored to do this. Marv is a friend, as you have said Mayor, he is recognizable, he is, between him and Gary and Warren, we couldn't be more blessed to have someone stable around to give us the important things that we need to know, more than these folks. So Marv, on behalf of the Missouri House of Representatives, proclamation for you.
Good pleasure, my friend. Thank you sir.
Very good. Thank you Steve.
Appreciate it. I don't think it should have. It does not say "good morning" here.
It should have, right? Put that over there. And as I just said, our sister city is here and St. Robert is here, George could not be here, but Anita is here to also give you a proclamation. And Anita, we appreciate you being here.
Well, I actually grew up in Waynesville, so you've always been around since I've been around. I've heard stories in your morning show about dear crossing rain, sleet, snow, and ice, numerous other things.
Had a little bit of that this morning, didn't we?
Yes, we did. But on behalf of Mayor Lawrenceon, the citizens of St. Robert, the Board of Aldermen, we thank you for your many contributions to our community. And we offer you our highest appreciation with this certificate and just wish you the best in your next phase alive.
Okay.
And we'll miss ya.
I'm not going anywhere.
No, he's not going anywhere. We're not going to give him to retire Anita.
Okay, well, you're going to stay then, we won't miss ya.
Okay, so you want this back?
No.
Anita, Anita, step up here, get your picture listed, listed to you.
You can tell I'm not a politician. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and I'll say one more time, Marv is not retiring.
No.
We're just recognizing 40 years.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you Terry.
Love you honey.
Well, our next guest, and I bet most of you have not met her, and kind of the joke is that every time I see Cheryl, she looks different and I have to kind of look at her name tag to see who she is. I'm kind of embarrassed a little bit.
How long has Cheryl's hair changed or grown?
I think it's something about your hair, I think maybe you're not behind your desk, there's something that's different, okay? Guys, I'd like to introduce to all of you, our postmaster from Waynesville. This is Cheryl Huhman, H-U-H-M-A-N for you media people. And Cheryl has a wonderful announcement to make.
Hi, nice to meet you all. I have seen some of you in my post office here, I've been here since April. I had been with the post office 21 years and I'm excited to be in this community here. We are building a new gene, we're not there yet, but I'm close, I'm driving back and forth from Jeff City, but soon I'll be a little closer to you guys. Luz and I got together with an artist in Jefferson City and we came up with a postal pictorial postmark for the Christmas on the square. So we're very excited about that. It's a fun way to personalize your holiday cards and letters. So myself and a clerk will be set up in the lobby during Christmas on the square between 6 and 9. We'll have those, bring your Christmas cards, get them ready to mail out that night, and we'll do this special cancellation with Christmas on the square, happy holiday station, recognizing Waynesville, let's leave cancellation mark on your cards.
Isn't that cool?
It'll personalize them and makes them a little more special, so. I have some of these flyers on the table also with my business card, if you guys need anything, stop in, say hi, give me a call.
And I don't remember us doing anything like this in Waynesville. This may be the first time that we've done something like this. So I'm very excited about it.
She said it's like 175th anniversary, so we didn't get on the ball with any of that, so just up for Christmas on the square, so we're excited.
Very good. And you made a comment in your note to me Cheryl about, there are people who literally will send their mail to you to get them stamped.
It's like kind of collectors.
Because they collect them.
The postmarks, so they'll mail them from Alaska and all across the country, sometimes even foreign, so I'll like kind of give you guys a hint of how many of those we get.
Cool. Well, we're not Santa Claus Minnesota, or North Pole Alaska, there's different ones, but we definitely have Christmas on the square. So this year, guys, I'm very excited about this. Be sure, I've got my cards all planned out to have them ready, so.
They'll be stamped, so as further word, we're not going to be able to sell stamps that night, but so we'll have to be ready.
And I'll be sure and say that. And I even mailed myself one. I made myself one so that I can keep it. So Cheryl, thank you. Thank you and nice to meet you.
Again.
Again. Well, that was exciting, having Marv here and Cheryl, exciting to have you here. You're welcome to stay and watch a little of the business if you want. Okay, let me gather my stuff up here. And then, before we go on to the agenda, I did want to make a statement about Bill Ransell. And to let Bill Ransell's family know that the city of Waynesville is thinking of him tonight. Bill was the mayor of Waynesville from 1988 to 1996, starting as a city councilman, getting elected as mayor, and all of us know that he moved on to state positions. He never quit serving Waynesville, born and raised in Waynesville, graduated from Waynesville High School. If you knew Bill, you knew this, he never shied away from controversy, he never avoided questions. And anytime I talked to Bill, he always had a solution and some comment. And he was such a good advisor for me. He was a friend to so many people in our community. And I will tell you that Bill Ransell is going to be missed. And so tonight, the city of Waynesville honors his service, we honor his love for the community of Waynesville. Tomorrow, I have instructed our flags and hopefully the flags in our community to be flown at half staff in honor of Bill Ransell. And I believe some of you are going to the funeral tomorrow. His funeral is tomorrow at 12 o'clock at the United Methodist Church. So our thoughts tonight again with the Ransell family. All right, moving on, we're going to go to our board and commission reports. Wait, wait a minute, one more personal thing. Come on up, come on up Sean. One more personal thing, we have a special guest in the audience tonight. Guys, we have the mayor of Crocker with us tonight. Hello there Glenn. Guys, this is Glenn Smith and he's the mayor of Crocker. We also have, what do you call it, elected?
Clerk-elect.
Clerk-elect of Plaski County and David Ernst is in the audience tonight too, so glad to have you guys in the audience.
Oh Dave.
So our first board is Park Board and Sean is here as well as Janet. Janet's with the planning and zoning of course, go ahead.
Good evening. The report for November 7th, 6pm, we had the meeting here at the, this location. The meeting began at 6pm, we did not have a forum. We are looking to address some issues at a next meeting, a special meeting, and I'll be with the mayor offline and kind of speak a little bit about the particulars of that meeting. But as far as the things that we did talk about here, we received some reports from the parks superintendent, some good news reports. One of those is that he has replaced all of the sanitation stations in the Waynesville Park area. So there was one place in Waynesville, one on Ruby Duce Side, and there was a third request that we're considering, we're looking at the right spot to place in RV Park.
And that's the dog, the dog sanitation?
Yes. So those, and the good news is, as soon as he placed them, he had placed them, people were really using them.
Very good.
Because they were pulling up the trash, so that's a good news story. There were people that were requesting more stations, but we said, we're just going to look and see how this plays out and then we'll make the determination at that time.
Very good.
Also, there were no updates for the sports program, but we do have a new director for WSR, which is Nikki Brown, and we say welcome to her, to the team, and we're going to make sure that she comes out and takes in our meetings and puts up a date and build those relationships.
And we really thank Andy. Andy Cockburn left us for another job and Andy did a lot for our program and we appreciate him.
Yeah, he did a lot, a great job on Andy's part, especially the hard work he really put a lot of hours in to make it what it is today. New business, I'm just going to keep hammering this issue, and this is, it's really not an issue, it's our National Kids Department, they really want to make this an event that the community embraces, that includes St. Robert and even our surrounding communities. The main thing that I want to talk about is, it takes place on May 18th, it's from 10 to 2. We have several organizations already said they want to participate, but I wanted to give out my email address for anyone that is interested in participating in the event. The focus and the mission statement behind it is just to give our youth another alternative, expose them to things that they have not had the opportunity to, maybe because of their parents, working all the time and so forth and so on, things like fishing, there's going to be some creative arts, the library's going to be there, we're going to have the 4H program, I already talked to those people there, and also the RC Outlaw Race Track will be there to give the youth an experience, time to play with some expensive toys for free.
Are these the people that are wanting us to build a track?
That's not the people that want us to build a track, but that is, they're located in Crocker.
Okay, but is this the idea?
This is why we put it here, we want to actually also see how many people are interested in it.
Okay.
And this gives us a good opportunity to poll it before we move forward.
Very good.
But the email address is parkboard@waynesvillemo.org. We did not have any updates on our parks, except for Glenn Haven, when we talked about Lea Clean Up, things along that lines. And as far as events, of course, the Durners Day Parade went off well, there was only one thing, we didn't have enough rain. But it was a, it was a great event, so we really appreciate everyone that came out to make that a success, all the volunteers. Also, we have the, in December, the Christmas Parade will be on the 2nd, and it starts at 2pm. And Christmas on the Square is on the 6th, and it's from 6 to 9pm. As far as our registered meeting, we will not have a meeting in December, and we will meet again in January, and that meeting will take place on the 10th at 6pm of 2019 already. So, there are no questions, that's all I have.
Sean, I know it wasn't a park event, but trunk or treat? I was hearing estimates from people that you probably had 2,000 kids.
Yeah, it was a, it was a great time and there, the rain came right when we were supposed to stop. So that turned out pretty good. I don't know the total numbers, but it was, it was a great time. Maybe a little bit less than last year, we had about 25 last year, but this year was around that.
Who ever told me that they keep track of what they give out?
Okay.
And they had like over 1,600.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's great. Yeah, we had an awesome time out there and again, thanks, thanks for every organization that participated, we're going to continue to do that. Everyone has it on their calendar, so they already kind of know the flow, they do what they can do and contribute.
And Sean, I appreciate you so much. You and Janet, Janet is the chairman of our planning and zoning, you guys give so much to this community and I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Sean? Thank you sir.
All right, thanks.
We did not have a planning and zoning again, I believe we haven't had a meeting in probably five months. Three, four? Something like that. But there's no need to have a meeting if we don't have business. And you know, we, that's kind of wasted time. So hopefully in the new year, we will begin to see some movement going on with some different things. And Janet again is here, and again, we appreciate you. Alan, is there anything you or Janet want to add? Probably not.
No.
Okay, very good.
Not at this time.
Not at this time, okay. Very good. And now we'll go to our standing committees and Councilman Clark, Rhodes and Grounds.
Okay, Rhodes and Grounds, we met on the 1st of November and we had a couple of visitors that attended our meeting and provided some citizens' comments. The first one was Ms. Pat, Ms. Pat Jones, relative to some issues she wanted to present to our committee concerning Booker Road. Basically, she was there to get a follow-up on the paving of Booker Road and that, she was here, oh, a couple of months ago I believe it was, and brought that subject up. And it was a few months back. One of the things we discussed, that Mr. Harold brought up, was the paving of Booker Road was not in our current three-year plan, but it was added to the 2020, 2020, excuse me, capital improvement plan. We also mentioned to Ms. Jones that the city council and mayor will make adjustments, but she needed to keep in mind that other citizens have also been waiting for the roads to be paved and we have made those other commitments. Mr. Harold stated that the city wants to pave all the roads, but we only have a limited budget and we can only do what we have planned. Another issue that Ms. Jones brought up concerned some potholes at the end of Booker Road near Highway 17. Mitch was going to go out and take a look.
We fixed those, Mr. Clark. We did fix those.
Okay.
Yeah.
Those have been fixed. So Mr. McDonald did go out and look at them and those have obviously been fixed. Ms. Jones also asked what could be done about the tree limbs that are falling over on the road. Were those looked at?
Yes.
And we can't touch them.
I think most of it's private property.
Yeah. And Mitch also went out and looked at those, and this is one of those instances where the tree limbs are not, we can't touch them, we can't go on, go around cutting everybody's private property down on limbs. So that answers that question. Another question that Ms. Jones had was the possibility of additional streetlights being placed at the end of Booker Road.
Answer is yes, and we're in the process of trying to get that accomplished.
So the answer to that is yes?
Yes.
And we will take that up on our next committee meeting. Thank you.
We're on it.
Good job. Mr. Keith, Keith Pritchard was there to provide some comments. He's been, Mr. Pritchard stated, been waiting for 30 years for Suedeburg Road to be paved. While he appreciates Mrs. Jones' concerns about Booker Road, he would not like his road to be reprioritized. Primarily, Mr. Pritchard wanted to voice his appreciation to the city, putting up the veterans banners. Mr. Pritchard's great-great-grandfather Lorenzo served in the Union Army during the Civil War, is on one of those banners.
And of course, that's Lone Oaks program.
Yes.
Lone Oaks does that.
Yes. And there's no new bullet holes in mine, so thank you very much folks. Next item of business we discussed in regular session was storm drainage issues. We had a resident come and talk to us last month I believe it was.
September.
September's meeting, concerning some storm drainage issues they had that was causing some issues for them on their private property. Mr. Harold stated, and everyone in the committee had looked at it, if we put in storm drains, the project is estimated to cost between $40,000 and $50,000. Mr. Harold stated that in the past, homeowners throughout the city have created a lift on their driveways in order to deter the water from entering their yard. Councilman France stated that the contractor paved the driveway with the lay of land as opposed to leveling out the driveway, which is standard practice to help situations like this. One thing we did discuss, one option is for the city to do a cost share with the homeowners to update the driveway, but that would set a precedent and many other citizens would begin requesting the same type of thing on their private property. The city cannot afford to retrofit for all contractor errors throughout the city that occurred years ago. Mr. Harold and Mr. McDonald provided a recommendation to, will provide a recommendation to owners that they can show to a, show to a contractor, but they cannot condone spending city funds on a citizen's personal property because the city cannot afford to do this for each and every citizen. Next topic was the proposed budget for 2019. There were no material changes to the budget proposal, we've talked about for better part of three months now, it's gone through each and every committee. So it was the consensus. So it was the consensus by vote and unanimous approval that we poured that onto the City Council for, for passage. Next topic was the recreational trail grant award. Michelle Brown submitted this grant, and we have received the official notification that we have received the grant. Amber Box will be the project coordinator for this, for, for this particular grant. This grant will connect downtown to our walking trail, improve the trailhead, put in a handicap accessible bathroom, and pave the gravel parking lots on that street. Risky Road Engineering, that was the next topic we discussed. Engineering for the Risky Road project will cost about twenty-five thousand dollars, but these expenses are reimbursable through the Community Improvement District. This project will connect Risky Road with Discovery Drive. Connecting the outer road is an important priority that would help traffic in the city as well as help our commercial customers. This is a large, expensive project, and the city will be working on it a little bit at a time. Route sixty-six shield placement. Mayor Hardman brought a proposal to the committee and stated that Jake Kleppel, the teacher responsible for the team of students that placed the mural on the Odyssey Scuba Building downtown, has expressed an interest in placing a Route sixty-six shield on the, excuse me, on the security bank in Ursula Jewelry and the post office and business graphic corners on the downtown square. The businesses she, she has spoken to are very excited about this project. The only cost for this particular project would be for the cost of the paint. Mayor Hardman feels that this would be a, bring in more Route sixty-six enthusiasts and improve our tourism of the downtown area. Councilman France stated that he would even entertain the idea of more shields replacement even close to Route sixty-six. The committee asked the mayor to continue her research and get back with them in January. And finally, in open session, we had a, Mitch gave the committee an update on all the street projects, and they are busy as usual, doing an outstanding job as usual. And there was a need for closed session. We went into closed session at five oh four P.M. We came out of closed session and adjourned at five ten P.M.
Very good. Any questions for Alan? Bruce, one of the things I was gonna ask you about, we have been washing gravel from Mitchell Creek and the Dry, the Dryer Bridge. How, how are we doing on that? Is it saving us a lot of money? I've noticed that the piles back there are getting bigger.
It saves us a lot of money. We don't use that gravel for our streets, it's not for street, not the type of gravel used on streets. We use it to bed our water and sewer lines. So I think we're using a lot in the industrial park right now, as we're working on our sewer line in the industrial park.
Very good.
So it saves the city thousands of dollars.
I, I thought that we did, it was really kind of a thousands of dollars that we save on buying gravel, so good for us. Okay? Utility, Councilman France.
I called the meeting order on November sixth. We were all present. Well, we had Mr. Doc Brown sit in for Mr. Clark, who was absent. Mutual Aid Report. As people know, we had three of our electrical department go down and help in Florida, and basically, they came back with a letter from the mayor of Tallahassee thanking them and the city for our support in regard to them and their electrical work. And if you notice who the mayor is, he's also one of the gentlemen running for governor of Florida. And our people, we got down there, they completed all the work safely and came home to us. Sunset Water Tank is currently being constructed, as we speak, by A.S.T. Storage, they're on site. Electrical reconductor, we've been, they've been working on this for the past year in various areas, updating our electrical lines that have, are old and aged and are no longer, or like up in, I think that's A, is, was, had three-phase power, and we took it, it didn't need three-phase power any longer, and so we took it down and to a single-phase power. So it's, it's making it a much more reliable system. So we just finished down, coming down along, some of you may have seen us along Route sixty-six, near the apartment buildings and the distributor of candy and sodas, it was up in that area, so. And they've got that completed. The utility support for Taco Bell has been totally completed, and Taco Bell opened this past Monday, and they're doing business. Electric Department, Mr. Sheldon stated his department had seven outages this month, nine streetlight work orders, and three tree work orders, and plus they did six new services. You may be interested to know that all the streetlights that are in the city, not the yard lights, the dusted domes or whatever, but every streetlight within the corporate limits of Wanesville are now all LED.
Very good.
So that's quite a savings to our residents, and it's a lot brighter. Waste Water Department, Mr. Eldred stated his department finished the Risky Road lift station upgrade, and they're continuing lift station maintenance, insulating water meters and cold, for cold weather, and working on preventative sewer line maintenance. We have about sixteen areas on our main line that we know are subject to clogging, and so we've been going through them preemptively and rotating them out, flushing them out, so. Good thing. Gas Department, Mr. McDonald stated, the National Gas Department has finished their work in support of the Taco Bell and several new residential hookups, and helped assist other departments throughout the city. We, there was a necessity for closed session. And to, and then we reconvene into open session. Proposed budget, 2019 budget, we went over all the utility departments' budget. We've been doing that for the last three months, and there is a little bit of movement in there based upon some needs that have come up recently. And we're gonna have a proposed natural gas reservation rates ordinance coming in. As people know, we've reported on this for some time. We've been dealing with this for five months now, and we've, as you know, we've hired attorneys at the FERC, which is a federal energy regulatory commission in DC, along with our counterparts in St. Robert, St. James, Cuba, and Richland is working with us as they buy from us. So we are doing our absolute love best to bring this to a reasonable conclusion at that level, but it is not a real easy proposition. So if you have questions in regard to it, please feel free to talk to Mr. Mitch McDonald, Mr. Bruce Harold, or you may also contact me, and I will do my absolute best to get you answers to any of your questions in regard to it.
And then Mike, we'll let Mr. Harold talk a little bit about it before we vote on it.
We have still got a meeting on December fourth on our schedule, and that may be canceled, but with all these things going on, we want to make sure we're staying informed, especially with the December first day. So having gone through the business, the meeting adjourned at four forty-nine.
We are going to talk a little bit about what is happening with us for the natural gas, and Mr. Harold is going to do some explaining about that, but let's go ahead and get it started. We don't have an attorney with us tonight, that, that means Michelle gets to do the reading. We have an ordinance, twenty-three forty, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance establishing rates for a natural gas reservation increase for the city of Wanesville fixing an effective date. An ordinance establishing rates for a natural gas reservation increase for the city of Wanesville fixing an effective date.
Very good, I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mike, second by Ed, and Mr. Harold, I think you need to discuss this with the public.
Okay. Remember, this has been a rate increase that we've been fighting for several months, and we've been fighting this very vigorously with other cities in our region. Of course, as Mike said, we joined forces with St. Robert, Cuba, St. James, and of course, Richland. And basically, this is a rate increase forced upon us by the MoGas Pipeline. It's the only pipeline that serves our area, and they're looking to increase the reservation rate for the natural gas that comes to our area from twenty-two dollars a decatherm to fifty-two dollars a decatherm. Just keep in mind that we normally buy natural gas for around three dollars a decatherm, but we pay twenty-two dollars a decatherm to get it down to us, and, and the rate is proposed to go to fifty-two dollars a decatherm, which is a hundred and thirty-seven percent increase. We have been vigorously fighting this case at the FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Of course, we've hired an attorney in Washington, DC, and with all the other cities, we've been steadily fighting that case. However, this, unless we settle with the pipeline, this rate will go into effect December first. And right now, you know, we're hoping that we can settle with the pipeline, but the pipeline may want too much money, they may want too much profit, that we may not be able to settle with. If we don't settle with them, we're gonna have a rating, rate case with the FERC, which would probably cost us tens of thousands of dollars, and may take one or two years to conclude. So what we're, you know, what we're proposing here, or as we're getting ready for potentially the worst-case scenario, but we have a formula here that we can adapt if we do happen to settle with the, with the MoGas Pipeline. We have a formula that we can input, no matter what the settlement figure is. The worst-case scenario, our rate will go up to fifty-two dollars a decatherm. And that, that will be, of course, for all the cities in our region, includes Fort Nourwood. And of course, our impact is about four hundred thousand for the, you know, to Wanesville. And I think most of the other cities have a three or four hundred thousand dollar impact for them. I think, Fort Nourwood's in the same boat, I think their impact is two point seven million. I know, I think Ralla and other cities that are served by Ameren, they will have an impact too. So this is, this will be a major impact. Now what we're proposing in this, in this rate that we have is that the city absorb twenty percent of the cost. So we're not gonna pass on all the costs to our citizens, we're gonna absorb twenty percent of the cost, which we estimate at eighty-one thousand dollars. We're also putting, of course, in our budget, we have fifty thousand for the legal fight and thirty thousand in contingencies, so we have basically a hundred and sixty thousand in extra expenses that the city will absorb fighting this rate case. Okay? So I think that's, you know, we're trying to do our best, we're trying to fight it at the FERC, and then we're also trying to mitigate it for our citizens here. It's gonna be a big hit financially on the city, but we're gonna take the eighty-one thousand out of reserve. And of course, the other eighty thousand for legal fees doesn't, you know, help, help, help us very much either, but it's very important for us to continue to fight this, fight this fight. So I've kinda hit some of the high points, but I'm glad to answer any questions about this that you may have.
And again, I believe Mike mentioned this, we are, we've been talking about this for about five months. So we knew this was coming. We did right away start talking to the public about it. It was in our newsletter, it's been in my media releases, I've talked about it on the radio. So I've been trying to get the word out to people. This is horrendous. We are, we have decided as council that we're gonna fight this. Someone said earlier, we're not gonna roll over and just play dead. We're gonna try to fight this. The problem is, of course, on December first, our rates go up. So if you have natural gas in your house, your rates are gonna go up. But now, I want everybody to know that the city has come up with a plan to try to absorb some of that cost, to help you, to help you so that you don't have to pay the hundred percent. I believe you said eighty, you'd end up paying eighty, the city will pick up twenty percent of it.
That's only on the maximum.
Right.
If we get hit with the fifty-two dollars.
If it goes with the fifty-two.
If we don't settle anything.
But on the back of the ordinance, there are some options there, for example, if it goes to twenty-five, if it goes to twenty-seven. So there are options there that we could adopt. So we're kinda looking at all of the different alternatives, is that a good way of saying that, Mr. Harold?
Mayor, this formula, we'll, we can adapt this formula wherever the rate ends up.
Right.
We're, we're prepared for the worst-case scenario, but if perchance we happen to negotiate and get a good settlement before December first, then this ordinance will cover that settlement as well.
And then the other thing, Bruce, you said this earlier, but I think the other thing that's important for the public to know is that we're trying to keep our costs down to make our natural gas competitive with propane. And so that was kind of in the back of your mind, I believe, when you came up with this idea, to make it so that it's the same price as propane, so that our, our citizens wouldn't feel like, I've gotta change to propane. We're gonna fight this, hopefully something's gonna happen.
It's lower than propane.
Okay.
Ultimately, it's with that subsidy, it will be slightly less than propane.
And Mayor, we did put, we adopted, I think, that last month in the city program, you know, the five hundred dollar grant for citizens that wanna, may wanna convert from natural gas to natural gas and electric backup, something like that, you know. So we do have a program like that, that our citizens can take advantage of.
And that would be on new, new systems, is that what you told me, putting in new systems?
Or changing their existing system.
Okay. So again, I, I know a lot of people don't, this is gonna be on YouTube later tonight, and hopefully some people will be watching it, you'll be checking out, you know, whatever comes out in the media, whatever Daryl puts out, and let the people know that your gas bill is gonna be higher, and that the city of Wanesville is working very, very hard to try to protect you and try to help you. And so that's kind of the options here, that's the thinking behind this ordinance. Again, we have discussed this at, at length. This is not something we just thought up. We've been discussing this for months. And so I have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions or comments?
I have one more.
Okay.
And that is that, you know, they wanted this price increase to go into effect immediately, and our first measure, our first step we took was filing for an immediate delay of it, which is under law, you can do that. And so we were, we were very proactive in trying to get this statement off to where we could actually work this out and work with them to help our citizens. So we stayed it off until December first, for last summer, when they wanted it, and said it would go into effect.
And so many, five cities, you know, are involved in this, not just Wanesville. Alan?
Basically, a couple of comments. It's important that everybody knows this is just one of several issues we've had with this particular company that goes back for at least ten years. This is just the latest round, dealing with the thugs. And is it an accurate statement, Bruce, that we're subsidizing the discounts that they're giving to the larger users?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I think they off, they gave Spire, which is, which is a former LaClea Gas Company, their, their rate is six dollars a month, I believe thirty-eight cents per decatherm, and ours is projected to go to fifty-two dollars a decatherm. It's almost eight times what's, what, what Spire is paying, which is their, I believe, their largest customer on the pipeline up in the St. Louis area.
Yeah, 'cause, and that's the point I'm trying to make, we, we've got one of those traditional David and Goliath things to where ourselves, St. Robert, St. James, Cuba, we're dealing with the folks at the FERC up in DC, and that is gonna be a very, very difficult process, and Bruce and the staff have worked tirelessly to come up with the, the best plan for this, but these folks ain't doing any of our communities any favors.
I, I was reminded, Bill Ransell used to say, it's not a Democrat-Republican issue, it's a rural and urban issue. And as we've talked about this natural gas thing, I've thought a lot about that. That is exactly what's happening. It is the urban people that are being pitted against the rural people, and the rural, rural people are having to carry the bucket.
Mayor, do you wanna say that our representative senators and...
Is that you?
I don't know.
Do you wanna say a representative senator in Congress wrote a letter to the FERC protesting this rate increase? However, the FERC responded, basically, it's in the, it's in the hands of the, of this process and judge, and really could not intervene effectively on our case. And I do wanna emphasize again, this is a regional issue, it's not Wanesville. It hits all our cities in this region, it's gonna hit Fort Nourwood, it's gonna hit Rolla too, through Ameren, UE, who's their provider too, and the cities we just mentioned.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Madam Clerk, would you call the road on ordinance twenty-three forty?
Councilwoman Polk, yes. Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman France?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman France?
Yes.
Very good, and that's unanimous, that ordinance passes. And we will keep the public informed as to what happens. Finance and Human Resources, Councilman Liberty?
Yes, the meeting was called to order at five PM. We reviewed the bills, there's a motion made to pay the bill, unanimous, the bills will be paid. Monthly budget review and account status, Mr. Harold reported to the committee that as of November eighth, we had over three-point-five million in the city bank accounts, with three million in reserve and restricted accounts, and over five-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand in available monies prior to payment of the electric bill, which would leave a balance of a hundred and sixty-two thousand. He reported as of the end of October, we should be at eighty-three percent of our budget projections, and at the end of October, our actual revenue was seventy-nine percent, and our expenses at seventy-eight percent. The ordinance was discussed, it's, uh, already been brought up. Also, the airport received several grants for two thousand and nineteen fiscal year, amounting to three-point-five million, and a new terminal, marketing and taxi projects. Fuel sales at the airport have also increased. We're anticipating receiving a new park grant, amount of eighty-eight thousand, which would add to new bathroom and improvements to this, the trail. Mr. Harold explained, uh, that two thousand and nineteen budget had included a three-percent step increase for the employees who received satisfactory evaluation and rec, recommendation from their supervisor. And that was brought to a vote, and unanimously, we agreed to have it go to the full city council for approval. Uh, ordinance of lease purchase of a aircraft fuel truck. Mr. Harold stated the airport board had budgeted for a new fuel truck for two thousand and nineteen, with the increase in fuel sales with the military, we need to be able to provide them a reliable fuel service, and in the past, we've had problems where the one we now have has broken down, so training wasn't able to be conducted, so we are now looking at, uh, getting a new fuel truck, so we have a backup. Recreational Trail Program Grant, committee reviewed the letter that we selected for the program, City Clerk Michelle Brown completed submitted grant application, and Amber, as it was already discussed, will be the manager of that project. Personnel update, Mr. Harold stated Andy Carr from the design from the sport program, and has been replaced by Nikki Brown. Mike Die has been hired for the, joining airport. The committee wanting closed session at five fourteen, return to regular set, session at six oh three. And Councilman Curtis made a motion to accept and approve submitting to council for approval the ordinance establishing rate for natural gas reservation increase. Vote was called, and it was unanimous. With no further business coming before the committee, committee adjourned at six oh four, next meeting will be held January tenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Very good, Clarence has a very busy schedule here, guys, but as I believe somebody's already commented, I believe it was Alan, we have been discussing the budget ad nauseam for like months, but that's, uh, just the way we do things, you know, we study it, it is a, it is a process. And so we have our budget tonight, um, let's go ahead and do the reading, and then Mr. Harold can give us a rundown on it. Uh, Madam Clark, would you do the reading for ordinance number twenty-three forty-one?
An ordinance adopting the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budget, fixing an effective date, repealing conflicting ordinances. An ordinance adopting the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budget, fixing an effective date, repealing conflicting ordinances.
I would entertain a motion. Motion by Clarence.
Second.
Second by Mike Curtis here, and discussion, Mr. Harold.
Uh, Mayor, I'll just hit a few of the high points, it's a twenty-point-nine million dollar budget, up from last year, there's about four million dollars in grant projects at our airport, including a new, uh, working on a new terminal, parallel taxiway, and some marketing grants. Uh, I think we discussed the, uh, increase of about four-hundred-and-five thousand in natural gas due to our, uh, rate case, problems with the pipeline. Uh, we put in, of course, our, you know, the grant for the, for the park, I think we discussed that in park board, and also in roads and grounds. Uh, we did get, uh, we did get some good news today, we were planning on a ten-percent increase to our insurance, our insurance came in at four percent, so we got a little bit of, so we got some savings there, so it's a, a very busy, um, very busy budget. We're doing a lot of things for the city, accomplishing a lot of grant projects, and a lot of new projects for the city.
Very good.
If you'd like to answer any questions, of course, we have discussed it in every committee as we normally do, as we present the budget and work the budget through every committee, and I appreciate the staff input, and, uh, Stephanie Luthner, our finance officers, work on this budget.
It's always a, it is a good, interesting process, and, you know, any new person on city council needs to sit in on budgeting, because it is something to see, uh, how we divvy, divvy the money up. And this is, uh, my first twenty-million-dollar budget as mayor, uh, nearly twenty-one million. And one thing that we've also, uh, talked a lot about, Bruce, is this coming fiscal year is gonna be very tight.
Yes.
And we've got so many things that we've got to do, and now, of course, we're faced with a lot of different issues, so it is gonna be a tight budget. So do any, uh, see, we got the motion, we've got a second, and are there any other questions for Mr. Harold or comments?
Mayor, I will mention one more comment, we are taking eighty-one thousand dollars out of reserve, uh, to, uh, to subsidize the natural gas rates to our citizens, so...
Very good. Okay? I think that's Bruce's, it's ma, I think, I think that maybe your microphone is making a little noise. Uh, this is, uh, again, ordinance twenty-three forty-one, Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Councilwoman Folkert, yes. Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman France?
Yes.
Our budget was unanimous, and that is adopted for the fiscal year. We also are fortunate this year to be able to offer a three-percent increase to our employees, really just a cola, wish it was a lot more, because they work very, very hard. Uh, this is ordinance twenty-three forty-two, Madam Clark.
An ordinance adopting the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen salary schedule, and amending personnel manning chart, fixing an effective date, repealing conflicting ordinances. An ordinance adopting the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen salary schedule, and amending personnel manning chart, fixing an effective date, repealing conflicting ordinances.
Very good, I would entertain a motion. Motion by Alan, second by Cecil. Cecil, I give you the chance. Uh, and this again, this again is our salary schedule, and Mr. Harold, do you have anything to add to this?
No, Mayor, unless there's some questions.
Okay, any questions or comments? Again, we wish it was, uh, twenty percent.
You know, I do have a comment on that.
Okay.
Uh, if, if the citizens realized how much money our employees have saved them by the work that they do, uh, and throughout, throughout the city, whether it's the staff in this building, or our utility crews, our roads and grounds, uh, our police department, uh, they would absolutely, uh, be in total agreement that this is the absolute least we could do for them. So I just, I really wanna thank all the, especially, all my utility personnel, uh, that make this thing run, and my utility billing department, uh, that worked so tirelessly, uh, to make this city's utilities, when you hit the switch, this stuff works.
That's right, very good. Okay, and Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Councilman France?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yeah.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Folkert?
Yes.
Very good, and that salary, uh, is set for our employees. We also have ordinance twenty-three forty-three, which involves the purchase of a jet refueller, refueller truck for the airport. Madam Clark?
An ordinance approving a lease purchase agreement with Security Bank of Pulaski County for the purchase of a GarSight five-thousand-gallon jet fueler, refueller truck, fixing an effective date. An ordinance approving a lease purchase agreement with Security Bank of Pulaski County for the purchase of a GarSight five-thousand-gallon jet refueller truck, fixing an effective date.
Very good, I entertain a motion. Motion by Clarence, second by Mike France over here, and are there any questions? Mr. Harold, anything to add? I think we've talked about that earlier.
No, I think we covered that.
Very good. Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Councilman France?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Folkert?
Yes.
And that ordinance passes unanimously. We now have the Police Committee Emergency Services, and that is Councilman Conley.
Okay, the Police and Emergency Services Committee met on November the first. Uh, the council members were, of the committee, were not there, other than myself, so I asked the two gentlemen on the right and left to, uh, sit in, and they did a fine job. We had no citizens' comments. We, uh, looked at, at the committee, the code book, reviewed it again, and decided to pass it on to Sullivan, who was he, who was their input. We've got an update on the animal shelters. Uh, Susan Ratter gave us the update, I was supposed to give the update, along with Michelle Brown. The, uh, they've cut their overtime to the bare minimum, which has reduced costs, helped the budget. They have made a significant financial improvement from the previous years, even though they still operate at, at a deficit, and since they're a, uh, community service, and they will always operate at a deficit. Shelter has seen a thirty-three percent increase in adoption rates, they've been working hard to find the owners of dogs and collective fees that are incurred with, with picking up strays. The shelter on Fort Leonard Wood is in poor condition, so it has been closed temporarily for renovations paid for by the military. They will reopen again in the summer of, early summer, two thousand and nineteen. Meanwhile, the cats and dogs of Fort Leonard Wood are now being housed temporarily at the, um, Waynesville location, while the renovations are going on. Stephen Gray has resigned, and Angela Olson is the new full-time animal control officer. We've reviewed the budget, it brought to the council, which has just got approved. Police Department update, Chief Cordova has inter, they interviewed three applicants and hired Mr. Lynn Bay as a new officer. Uh, they have a new reserve officer, Angela Luna Hayes, who is the, uh, a school resource officer for Waynesville. The chief said that they have submitted, uh, grants for the DWI and hazardous moving violations. Those grants pay our officers for, uh, pay a time and a half, actually, for particular enforcement. And we will receive a twenty dollars grant for radios after first year, which will help the government of Black and Black. We, uh, cancel the meeting for December, unless there's some sort of an emergency. I ask for all the hung be, and I guess we're gonna keep it, so in case of floods or other natural disasters, no need for closed session, so we adjourned for soon, next meeting, June January.
Very good, any questions for Clarence? And I just wanted to say how thrilled I am that we have been working to update our code books, and something I get asked probably weekly is where can I find the ordinances of the city of Waynesville? And maybe in the spring next year, uh, we're going to have them online, so that'll be an added great addition for our city, and, uh, I think really the update is what's taking so long. I actually met the man the other day, it was very interesting seeing what they were doing, so, working on that and be looking for that. It would be on our website, and it would be under E-code, and you could literally put in a search word for dogs, and our ordinances would come up about dogs, so I'm very excited about that. Uh, airport, Mr. Harold, no meeting?
No meeting.
And economic development, Councilwoman Folkert is out of the room at this moment. Anybody else on that committee? Go ahead, go, Mike.
Uh, Councilwoman Folkert called a meeting to order at five o'clock. We've already discussed the shield placement, I think it's a good idea to have a few more of those, maybe. Um, there was, uh, the announcement from our, uh, postoff, postmaster, I couldn't remember her title, postmaster, um, we've talked the budget to death, we passed it. Uh, upcoming events, uh, Christmas on the square, everybody come out, and other business, Taco Bell is open, my wife's jumping up and down. That's all I'm gonna say about that. Uh, uh, we also will not have a meeting in December unless there's an emergency, our next meeting will be next year.
Very good.
And we adjourned at five thirty.
Very good. Ms. Folkert, we went on without you, okay? Uh, any questions for economic development? And, uh, kinda interesting that all your stuff was already covered.
Yeah.
Different committees. So, um, got a busy month coming up with Christmas on the Square, Christmas Parade is Sunday, December second, that's the Kwanonians, do that. Our Waynesville Downtown Business Association sponsors the Christmas on the Square, it's always a great event, and of course, it's quite different from any of the other events that we have, uh, because people don't sell things, they give things away. It's all about Christmas spirit, and so everybody take part in that. Um, we are also not going to have a December meeting, I believe that is the consensus, unless there were to be an emergency, and we would call a special meeting. So for the media, there will not be a December meeting, and I believe we've canceled all of our meetings except utilities, and we'll, we'll see about that, okay? We have other business tonight, and this was a dis, a discussion in our executive session. Uh, Mr. Harold, you wanna discuss it a little quicker?
Sure, Mayor, we're looking, uh, this relates to our natural gas case as well. As we're, uh, fighting this case at the, at the federal level, we've also decided amongst all our cities that we wanna also fight it at the state level. So several of the cities, uh, of course, Waynesville, St. Robert, St. James, and I believe Cuba's joined too, are looking to hire a local attorney, we're looking to hire a, uh, Smith and Turley, and put in a, uh, a law case, a lawsuit at the state level, um, protesting these unfair rates that we're getting from, uh, from MoGas. So I'll be glad to answer any questions about, uh, about this item here too.
Okay, this is ordinance twenty-three forty-four, Madam Clark.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the appointment of Tyce S. Smith and Smith and Turley as special counsel, fixing an effective date. An ordinance approving and authorizing the appointment of Tyce S. Smith and Smith and Turley as special counsel, fixing an effective date.
I entertain a motion. Motion by Mike?
Second.
Second by Cecil. I looked this, I looked this way, then I looked that way. Okay, and are there any discussion, questions or discussion? Okay, Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Councilwoman Folkert, yes. Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Upstanding.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman France?
Yes.
Thank you.
That ordinance passes. We do have city administrator report, Mr. Harold.
Mayor, I think most of the items have already been covered in the meeting, I'll just hit a, a few high points. Our street department has been prepared for the winter weather, which we've, uh, which we've had a little bit already this early in the season. We are looking at, um, requests for qualification for airport consultants in engineering, so we're, we're due to get those in, uh, tomorrow, and it's something that we have to do pre our, we are, uh, every few years, I think, to, to select, uh, to meet our grant requirements. Uh, also, to let you know, CoUSA and American Water are gonna hold a job fair on November twenty-seventh to twenty-eighth to fill positions for the water and sewer operations on Fort Leonard Wood, and we got a flyer, a flyer out. Of course, CoUSA is organization formed between, uh, the cities of Waynesville and St. Robert and the, and the sewer district, and our job is gonna be to operate the wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plant under, under, uh, American Water.
And you do have copies of the flyers, you're welcome to take those, maybe if you have, uh, place a business and, uh, let your people know about these... have, uh, place a business and, uh, let your people know about those jobs. There's some good jobs here. And please, you're welcome to pass that along, it is digital on Facebook.
I, I sent this, and it's posted at the Silver for Life, uh, Transcendence Systems Office.
Very good. Good. Very good, we appreciate that.
Transcendence Services and Orders have, have identified.
Again, these are good jobs, and, uh, we're excited about this. I think a lot of times, uh, the public doesn't really understand some of the stuff that goes on, you know? And I would just tell the public that this is a perfect example of how we make ourselves a partner with Fort Leonard Wood. And we make it so that it, it is good for Fort Leonard Wood to be here, that Fort Leonard Wood would not go anywhere else because they wouldn't get the support that they get here in our community. And this is a perfect example of that, it's an example of, of great partnership. Okay? And let's see, we have, uh, council comments, I just wanna say one word. Tim, I know you're up there. There's his arm. Uh, I hope that you got most of our audio, we're kinda having trouble down here with it. Uh, there was no school today, and so Mr. Wallace is left by himself up there, guys, and that's really why we were not on, uh, the TV. And I just want everybody to know that we are going to be on YouTube later, is that correct, Mr. Wallace? Very good. Uh, we will be posted on YouTube, and, and people can watch that, uh, at their leisure. And council comments, Cheryl, I'll start with you.
So, uh, with the snow this morning, I believe that it would be pertinent to let everyone, or remind everyone, to check on your neighbors, especially your older, uh, or people who are alone. Uh, and I hope everyone has a great Thanksgiving.
Very good.
Please be safe.
Very good. Cecil?
I just wanna remind everybody the deer season opened up this weekend. Uh, deer are everywhere.
No, they're not. They're everywhere in the city, they're, they're city deer, they're not afraid of
nothing. Uh, my daughter did hit one coming down to Summit Hill.
Oh, my.
Uh, we'll say that the deer was messed up, but it wasn't, there is a perfect buck imprint in the hood of my daughter's car. So, uh, be wary of the deer jumping out of you.
Good.
The city deer.
City deer.
You can't find any others.
Alan?
Uh, just wanna wish the residents a happy Thanksgiving, uh, and please keep our men and women in service, and our emergency responders, and your thoughts, uh, not only every day, but especially Thanksgiving, because they're the ones to stand and watch. And council, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Mike?
My favorite son, I only have one, moved to San Antonio, and, uh, we had a discussion the other night, he really likes San Antonio, but he said he misses Wayne'sville. I said, "What do you miss about Wayne'sville?" He said, "That guy on the radio," and we just, I'm, I'm, but, uh, he said, "I miss his voice in the morning." He said, "I miss just downtown." He said, "That was like Mayberry RFD when I was growing up." So, uh, it was just good to hear my son say he misses Wayne'sville.
Very good, that's nice. Jerry?
Folks, I would like to encourage everyone to attend Christmas on the Square. I've been here nineteen years, and it's always a joy to go down there. Rain, shine, freezing rain, freezing rain, Chief Cordova remembers that, and everything else, but please try to attend Christmas on the Square.
You're hearing.
Very good. Clarence?
I would like to thank Mr. Harold, the city staff, and all the city employees for a job well done throughout the year. And, uh, happy Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas, uh, since we won't be having a meeting.
Oh, that's right.
And you guys.
I forgot.
And have a safe one.
Ed?
Actually, I said on the end of the year, I get overlooked by the city clerk. Councilman Liberty's told by thunder, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas. I don't wanna do it anyway. Happy Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas, be safe, watch out for deer.
Very good. Ditto, ditto, right, Mike?
Well, you know, the kids are gonna be out of school for the Thanksgiving weekend, they'll be out sometime around the, uh, third week of December, also through the new year. Uh, so keep an eye out for them, 'cause, uh, you know, sometimes they don't look for us. The other thing is, I've been watching the news, we've had some children killed, uh, getting off buses and getting on buses. So, you gotta watch out. Our bus, the places where kids mount the buses is not always the absolute best spot. So, please, if you don't know the laws, uh, anytime those lights are flashing, stop, don't move until all the lights are turned off and they're moving. It doesn't, it doesn't take long.
I would like to add one more thing. Uh, last night, Boom and I got, got quite the scare. Uh, we were headed back from, through the Buckhorn area, and there happened to be one person on a bicycle, no lights or nothing. We've been coming up to the center lane, and another person walking. Use some sense, have lights, and reflective gear or whatever. Don't make somebody else have to suffer because they're gonna have to live with hitting you if you don't protect yourself with lights and stuff.
The other thing is, I went finished. Bottom line, you know, happy Thanksgiving, safe travels, uh, definitely come on downtown, uh, for Christmas on the Square, and have a very, very Merry Christmas, and be with the ones you love.
Amen. What a great, uh, Veterans Day parade we had. And I think it, uh, Veterans Day and the homecoming parade this year are some of the biggest crowds I've ever seen for our parades. And I expect, uh, hopefully the weather will cooperate, and we have the same thing at Christmas. But I had a special guest in my car, the little boy who dressed up like the World War One doughboy, and had so much fun with him. Our Christmas parade, I have invited the Ice Cream Girl to ride in my car, the little girl that's having ice cream with all the mayors. So she's gonna be in my car, and hopefully be throwing candy so that I don't have to. Um, that night, also remember that we will be lighting the Nativity scene, and I always say this, ever since I was elected mayor, that Nativity scene sits on private property and is sponsored by the Shrine Club. And we are thrilled to have it on the hill. It has, again, become an iconic thing for our city. And, uh, someone mentioned, uh, our first responders, my goodness, think about the people out in California and the fires that are going on, it is horrible. Happy Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas, and we'll see you guys in the new year.